This is the Thursday, December 4th, 2014, meeting of the Athens City Planning Commission. A quorum has been established. And if there's anybody who intends to speak to the Planning Commission today, could they just raise their right hand and solemnly swear to tell the truth, tell the truth as you know it? Okay, great. Let's see, disposition of minutes. Were there some questions that people had on that? John, did you have?
No, I move we accept the minutes.
Second? And all in favor?
Aye.
Has been approved unanimously. Cases, number 14-14, Cranberry Row Apartment Complex, Alan McMillan, Zero, West Washington. Let's see, Mr. McMillan, do you want to come to the podium? Or whoever your representative?
I should probably introduce this.
Okay, go ahead.
You may have been remember a while back, they came in here and did a preliminary presentation for this project. What it is, it's the old Frontier Communications Building, actually it's their accessory structure to the rear of their main building on West Washington Street. And they're wishing to put in six units, a total of 15 beds, in the facility, building on the same footprint and existing structure, two stories approximately on top of that from what's already there. They went to the BZA on April the 8th of this year and had to get a variance for six different variance requests. They did, they were awarded that. The variance requests were total lot coverage is greater than 40 percent, or excuse me, the building lot coverage is greater than 50, 40 percent. Total lot coverage is greater than 60 percent. A front yard setback, a right side setback, a rear setback, and lot size on the unit, number of units per acre for footage of the lot. So that was the variances they had to go for, and they received that, like I said, on April 8th of this year. It is in an R3 zone. It's kind of ironic that this site is, but it's an R3 zone, so this is an acceptable use of where it is located. And, out the fire, I got ashes all over me. The surrounding land uses, if you're familiar with the site, it's residential on Congress Street to the west. And basically, it's a parking lot owned by the same, by the applicant to the north of it, and it's more residential units there. To the south and to the east would be the B2D zones. It's basically behind Lucky is where this building is located, at the end of the parking lot that's across from the diner.
Cornwell Parking Lot.
Cornwell Parking Lot. I don't know if that's what we call it now.
Attractions is what they call it.
When you talk about. He's part of it still. Yes, I understand that Avery required part of it this week or something, or doing the part of that later, I guess. But again, the staff reviews from my office, the only issues other than the variances that they received that I have, and John, you need to be aware of this guy, I haven't talked to you yet, is the roof, or the maximum height, I feel is too tall right now, measuring it off, but I think you got a 12-12 pitch on this thing, so you can reduce the pitch and you can easily come into compliance on that. And I may note that the roof pitch needs to change. And the parking, underneath, they have six inside, not even 27 feet wide inside, so I'm only counting four spaces inside underneath, especially for maneuverability. So only four will be recognized there. And then the one spot on the exterior, the fire department wants the dumpster relocated there because it cannot go underneath the balcony, because that is egress unless you plan on fire suppressing above that dumpster. So you can't put that dumpster underneath the balcony the way you had it. So I had it moved to the other side. That said.
Your dumpster.
Well, you're gonna be, you're gonna have to have something too, so.
Your dumpster.
But the adjacent parking lots, it is in the same ownership, it's 45 parking spaces. So he will need 11 of those parking spaces at that location. 10 of them are allotted for the houses at 22 and 26 North Congress, eight for People's Bank, and 16 for Donkey. So he does have adequate number of parking spaces. All we'll have to do is need restrict 11 spaces off of that lot to this building, but it's, they touch each other, it's contiguous, so it should not be initiated.
I'm just curious as to why that, should that have been included in the BZA? If you're concerned about parking now?
No, because it's, that's legal. If it's need restricted, that's not a variance request.
And it's within the distance?
It is within the distance, yes.
Okay.
The, I made a note about bicycle parking, not an issue, but I just need a detail of it, which we'll provide. The biggest issue that we've come about, or come across on this site, we come across this morning, working very diligently with Engineering Public Works and with the fire department. The water line, and if you go to the back two pages of your package that you have there, currently, the way that the applicant proposed was to bring the water service off of Congress, just for fire suppression and for water service. I have been told that the volume of water flow on the four inch line on Congress is not adequate enough for fire suppression for this building. So the resolution is that the applicant will have to come with the water line off of South Court. Which means it'll be, that's North Court, I'm sorry, off of Court Street. And the proposal is to run it, tie it into the water line on Congress, so that we have a loop. Service then can come off of that, and a hydrant has to be put up at the alley intersection between Congress and the alley behind the building, or going into, the South Alley is what we've been calling it, south of the building. The reason for that is the, if the hydrant was to come off of Court Street, the distance from the hydrant to the building is greater than 150 feet, and according to the fire chief, that is too far of a run for them to give permission for service. 150 feet is the maximum distance. So we need to have a hydrant that is serviceable by a fire truck within 150 feet of the building. And the only way we can do that is extend that water line from Congress to Court and install a new hydrant at the alleyway at the corner of Court, or a corner of Congress and the alley. So John's not aware of this yet. I've talked to Ryan this morning about it, German, Ryan Buckley, the engineer, and I think that's the only resolution. The other resolutions, and it's in my notes, is if they were to somehow come off Court Street to the building, they could stop at the building, but then you guys would have to figure out a stand pipe system, a dry stand pipe system, because there's no interior hallway, so it'd have to be on the exterior. And I just don't know if that's very feasible. Andy said he would definitely talk to you guys about cost, labor, there's parts that help improve the city system as well, so that can all be worked on. We don't have any of those numbers or anything at this time, but he wants to talk with you two gentlemen about it. But outside of doing that, I don't know how this thing's going to get proper volume and water pressure for fire suppressants. So that's really what they're going to have to do.
So this line you're talking about from North Congress to, North Court to North Congress?
Uh huh.
Is that going to be a six or four inch?
Be a six inch.
Six inches.
And I know they only need four, so that's one of the things that Andy said, that he would probably take care of the difference in size, because it does help accommodate the water line on Congress, and he would work with them and negotiate that with them. So it is providing a benefit to the city as well. That's why he's willing to talk numbers with them about it.
I don't see how it upgrades the service on Congress.
Because the hydrant on, that would be installed would benefit those facilities in that area. Because right now, the facilities in that area, I believe, Fire Department had any of the concern, there's not enough volume if something was to happen on Congress Street. There are hydrants there, but it's very low volume.
With four inches, he's probably worried about the flow.
It's four inch, he said, and he said technically, because of the age, it's probably down to a two inch.
Okay. Couple of questions and comments. One, do you have a package for the appellant?
I will give them one, yes. I don't have one, they can have this one when I'm done, though.
Okay, the other question I have is, does this have to, is this going to require easements to run from North Court to North Congress?
The, we found out that the alley, through an auto survey, Ryan Buckley did it, that is a recorded alley already going through. Even though it's not platted, it is a recorded alley. So no, they will not need.
So it's city property?
Public?
It is public. It is a public alley, it's just not platted.
Okay.
But it is a public right of way. So, not uncommon. Columbia Street's one. Property lines run to the center line of the street, but it's a public right of way.
Okay.
So the asset can be accommodated and run through that alley.
Okay.
Or maybe you.
Yeah, just so they know, you know, they know what the discussion's about.
Where would any type of fire escapes?
Well, the balconies.
It's exterior, right?
The whole project has, as you see on the elevations, there are exterior balcony and entrances. Again, the doors from the units go directly into the units. It's not like you go inside hallway and then go into apartments.
Okay. And we have a larger schematic, right? If you want to look at the.
Are you good with the, with density as far as the additional people that are going to be in this area?
It meets all the code requirements in regards to, well, it does now because they got variance for it. The density was greater than allowed, but they received their variance for it.
And this building was pretty much used for storage for GTE, was it?
Yes, apparently, it's currently two stories now, the second floors were, I don't know which story they kept what on, one vehicle, one level was for their big bales or wires and the other level for vehicles to park in. Apparently, John was standing there, but apparently, the second floor is even sturdy enough for all the vehicles parking on it.
Really?
Perfectly sound.
You don't have issues with the sanitary sewer? I just see the note here.
The sanitary sewer just needs to be upgraded to a six inch today. I've already filled in on that.
And this parking space is also under Andy's? Is that why you've changed the parking in the front, based on this?
I'm, it's coincidentally, Andy and I had the same comments about parking, that the, the six spaces inside the building, first of all, weren't, they didn't be coted on size, and dismissed it by six inches, but the other part, there's no way. I have to say, four inside and a pair of bikes inside, and then where the dumpster location goes. He's got room to put the parking on the site, as even with four spaces and not even having that other one in front of the building, they still have enough parking because of a lot of Jasons, but it's in the same ownership.
Fire trucks can get down in the alleys?
No.
That's why we have to.
The service is going to be coming from Congress and Court.
All right.
And Court, literally by code, by state park, or by NFPA rules, is too far away. So that's why the hydrant has to be on Congress.
At, we've had conversations with staff, the potential right now is you could always get a fire truck into the parking lot, which happened when that, what was that, car hit the wire power line about last year, year before. But realize, if somebody builds something in that parking lot, Cornwell Parking Lot, or whatever you want to call it, eventually, you would not be able to get in there. And that's a concern. There's nothing to prohibit somebody from building something there, except the, yeah, again, this was a staff item a couple of months ago, saying, you know.
I have to refer to it as the attraction, because when you say Cornwell, I'm thinking back down where the store is.
Okay, yes, okay, sorry, yeah, the courtside pizza, but this, okay, the attraction's parking lot, okay. But that's, that's a limitation. You start saying, okay, what happens when the next development comes in? And even though it's all legal, it starts to, starts to build up, so we want to make sure we have adequate protection.
Because there's nothing really to prohibit future building growth in that parking lot, so.
Not even in the same ownership.
Mm-hmm. And of course, you know, eventually, 2018, I think all cameras, there's supposed to be cameras on the backs of all cars, right? So the parking spaces can get smaller, right?
It doesn't help. I have one now.
Yeah, I think it's going to be required sooner or later.
It doesn't help.
My vehicle still wouldn't.
Doesn't, exactly, doesn't help.
I'm scared for the camera on her or not.
It doesn't help.
I know.
It's a camera still.
I'm just joking. Six variances, that's pretty good.
I'm curious as to how comfortable you are with this, you know, the water line upgrade without knowing figures.
And I do have to apologize, because we, this happened late last night and early this morning, that we kind of figured all this out, put it all together, so they're kind of getting, they're just throwing at them right now too, for the first time, so.
Come up to the podium and.
By yourself and your residence? Or company? And yeah, obviously, we didn't know about all this. We did know a lot, though, already, because I've already talked to the fire chief about fire protection and kinds of issues that we need to deal with on the site. Obviously, we're as concerned as anybody about making sure everything is as good as can possibly be for the students that are going to live there and for the neighborhood. Now, your concern about the balconies, and I just went this morning, Alan and I drove to another project we did where the stairs would be non-combustible. The building as it is right now is concrete and brick, 16 inches thick, it's totally non-combustible as well. So we're starting from a shell that is going to provide as much protection as possible, at least for two stories, and especially from the garage part to the apartments above. And with using non-combustible materials for the surfaces and the walkways and the exterior balconies and railings, they can't burn. So that'll always have a means of egress would be available, hopefully, that will not be compromised by any kind of fire. And the roof also, I'm changing to metal instead of fiberglass shingles, just because the adjacent structures, we will still be lower than.
What are the materials being used for the addition?
Drive it.
Okay.
It's a, it's a plaster compound material, so they plaster, and, well, there's foam behind it, skin coats of plaster on the stories above. And I think, Alan, the parking issues can be all, I mean, those can all be worked out. The fire prevention, we've done this numerous times on projects that we've done uptown. And I think that since the city's willing to help and work together to make this happen, we already had to go, knew we had to go all the way down one way or the other, for our storm line tie-in, that had to go down towards Court Street. And then if we went to Carpenter Street, that was going to be over 50 percent of the way anyway up that alley. So really, we're looking at 40 percent additional underground that we have to do, and if the city's willing to help somehow, and we can work with our storm and our sewer and our water all together to upgrade the condition of that alley, like I said, it's something we've done on most of our projects, anyway.
Okay, and you can understand the concern about dumpster location underneath a balcony, just because occasionally, somebody does set fire to a dumpster out there, I think.
You're absolutely right, that's probably the most hazardous location that there could be. And we'll have to make, address that in more detail.
Okay.
Alan McMillan, 209 East State Street, Cranberry Row. Yeah, this is, I mean, we just learned about this, that you would have to tie Congress and Court together moments ago. And, you know, the bottom line is, this is our first shot at, you know, development, and we want to do a good job, and it sounds like the city's willing to work with us, and how we just provided, and if that, also putting that hydrant in gives better fire infrastructure for Congress. We own buildings on Congress as well, but just as citizens, you know, we're, we were deeply moved, and by the way, congratulations to all the city did with fire protection on West Union. We were spared, but we have two buildings on that as well, but we thought it was really the finest hour we've seen seven years here from the city and the community and the university all together. It was beautiful. So to incorporate those things in, we just, we'll continue to work in good faith, we want a good, a good structure, and, I mean, I don't know what the numbers are as I'm sitting here, but I, I'm sure we'll work that out.
We, we've done this before. Hickory?
Andy said this would be very.
Similar to that with Kevin Klein's BZ.
A lot of similarities, yes.
They're behind, unfortunately.
I know, but it's not surrounded by buildings.
No, but I meant the similar cost sharing about different components of what the developer is going to be responsible for. It also gave us an opportunity at the same time to do some upgrades there on the avenue, so we have a precedent, and, so Andy said it'd be similar.
Very similar situation.
John? So I'm trying to still imagine what's going to happen in a scenario where the fire department's needed, and you've got, the hydrants are going to be on Congress and Court. So that means somebody's going to be running hoses off of those?
Exactly what it means. What if it's within 150 feet? You know, they need fire, fire code, what they did on Union. They had to run them down the alleys there.
Obviously, they got hoses that have the length to.
Absolutely, they have a two and a half inch hose, I don't know how many feet it is, and then they can hook a Siamese up on the end of that and then run multiple hoses off of that. So that's what they did on Union, actually. So it's the same thing here. And it will have a fire suppression system with what they call a Siamese hookup on the outside, so they can also run a hose from that hydrant, screw that onto the Siamese, and that's feeding water through the sprinkler system, something we did not have on Union during the fire. This will have that, that's a requirement, so.
Where is the storm sewer? In the sidewalk? Under the sidewalk? That they're going to connect to?
I don't know.
None of Siamese, I thought maybe. Where is the storm sewer?
Can't see it, Mr..
It's not in the drawings.
So you want the bigger? Yeah, I gave him a phone for him.
No, you don't want to. You want me to point it out to you?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay, yeah.
These are miniscule.
Page is it? Go ahead, you probably know better than I. It's not noted here, and it's not noted that we're coming into it, I just did all this yesterday.
Sanitary.
But right there.
In the sidewalk?
That's the storm line.
Is it in the sidewalk?
No, it's in the middle of the alley.
Alleyway.
All right, no, where's, on Court Street, where is it?
If, if there's a big trench stream right at the beginning of this alley, and I think it ties directly into that.
Is it going down the?
It's going down, then it goes down.
Of course, I mean, but is, but where is, okay, will it accommodate?
It should, we're not adding any more water to the, that.
Well, we don't know.
Well, we're at the same volume of area here. And all the water that's coming off this building right now is going into that drain somehow or other.
Yeah.
Or it's just sitting up here in a big pile, a puddle causing.
The drain is right where the brick hits the concrete on the, you know, like there's a curb and then there's concrete, is that?
For this one?
Yep.
It's, it's just like, it's a catch basin, it's four feet deep.
In the alley?
In the middle of the alley, yeah. I mean, there's a grave on it.
So where is it? Okay, so we have a problem uptown with storm drainage, and I guess I wondered where it was going, unless they magically fixed it, but I don't know.
You're right about that, because a lot of times, I don't know where they're going, nobody knows where they're going. If you look at the storm maps around here, sometimes there's.
Andy didn't have any comments with storm.
I know, and we did do some upgrades. We did the North Court, yeah.
Yeah, you're doing it right now at the courthouse. I've seen that.
I know, but it has to.
Probably one of that big tunnel, it's going to go down Firm Street, naturally.
Hasn't it gone down yet?
That upgrade's done.
Yeah. But it's, it's hundreds of feet.
We're talking about the next progress.
It's hundreds of feet from there to there. I just wondered where.
It starts all the way up to Pine.
Yes, it does.
Well, I know that one, but the other one, okay.
This, okay, again, this is.
So it goes into that storm drain and there's no problem? Doesn't puddle when we get one inch in one hour? John, do you know, one inch in one hour, does it puddle around there? Catch basin?
I have to calculate.
I don't, I've never seen it, I just wanted to know if you had some.
I haven't done calculations on it. I have an eight inch line going from that drain.
You're going from a flat roof to a peaked roof, right?
Correct.
Still have faster runoff?
It'll be faster runoff.
Okay.
Right now, it's not going anywhere. I mean, it's getting there eventually.
Right.
Going under buildings or something like that? Okay. Oh dear. Okay, thanks.
Are there any other questions? Comments? Concerns?
As you can see on the report, there were no other comments from the police department and the city planner. So the biggest issues were definitely between myself, fire, and Engineering Public Works in regards to the water, was probably the big, the fire suppression and water supply is the biggest issue.
And we're, but they're sprinkled, right?
The building will definitely be fire suppressed, yes.
Okay, so if we hadn't had the last few weeks, we probably wouldn't be talking that much about it, right?
Well, again, even the way they had it originally proposed, with the four inch coming off of Congress, would not have been adequate volume for even the fire suppression system. But again, that's why they got to come off Court Street.
Okay, speaking as a citizen on this board, not elected official or anything else, I guess I wonder sometimes, and this is maybe more for John, Mr. McMillan, how much residential development will happen downtown before there's no longer an uptown?
John kind of knows the answer, John Posky has told us.
I did a study on this many years ago, and I took the, as much, I took the available number of areas that could be developed with the number of parking spaces that I figured could happen. And at that time, I think my number was like 120 beds could have been added, and that included what's already happened at the Gator or Hangar or whatever. That's talking about what proposed for possibly BP, Passion Works, Donkey, all of them I had figured in. Lambors, the only one that I, that I don't foresee right now happening, all the others have happened, would be the Historical Society. And that, that's the only lot that would be left that had, that could someday be converted to residential above, with it has parking there for tenants or within the parameters. So the.
When you were looking at this, so this was in conjunction with the transition from B3 to B2D for North Court?
Correct. That is correct. That was when I did that for the transition.
But so you, were you concentrating on just that particular block or the entire corridor?
I did just that particular block, but that's where all these have happened, is in the B3 areas, primarily in the North Court section.
But North Court, if you look at it, no, again, speaking as a citizen, is one of the most vibrant, other than, I mean, the place where you go if you're going to buy a Christmas present, quite often. And, you know, I think a lot of these developments are gradually going to force those businesses out. We've already seen it with Lambors.
But, but there's still business going in.
Yeah.
It's not forcing them out.
You know, and you're going to send, you know, it's, okay, I am concerned, and I, that's why I expressed it to them, not to you. I mean, you're talking about North Court, I'm talking about the entire area.
And what my.
It's a student watering hole, and that's good for the people that have investment in it, but I want to know when we will reach that tipping point.
I think we're getting close, and the reason being, there's no more available parking. And that's, when I did my study, it was based on available parking that I knew was out there that could eventually be converted from, to residential parking.
But it's, you know, if you convert it from people who go to shop in the store, I mean, or who work in the stores that they shop in, then you haven't saved anything, you've just got a residential spot that the student may or may not use.
But what I'm saying is, before those spots, maybe the store only required four spots, but they had 10. That's what I was looking at. So I knew they had an additional six spots that they could play with, and that, then that's what they've done.
I mean, from a planning commission point of view, I feel that this is really a problem. That's one of the biggest problems that we have is the uptown area, which is very, very desirable. I mean, when Rick Abel counted 2,500 units there, that was a long time ago. How many units are in the uptown area right now?
I couldn't tell you off the top of my head.
I bet, well, I bet it's closer to four or five.
Thousand?
Yeah.
No, we only have 5,400 units in the entire city, so I seriously doubt that.
No, I mean, I'm sorry, what was it?
Beds.
Beds, yeah, beds.
Probably not.
Well, I think, you know, it's easy to underestimate it, but I think that when we find out how many, I'm just concerned, it's not personal or anything, but I think that we have an interest in the uptown area, and it's more than just a, like a, this kind of thing. You know, where we, we have good press, but people don't shovel their.
Oh, the.
Humanities Council.
Yes, I saw that, it has a picture of the smoke shop that's burnt down and Alibaba, which is there.
Yeah, I know, that was from, you know, I sent it.
I understand what you're saying, but I think in this particular case, you're talking about a building that's, you know, being rehabilitated, that's off the...
Well, yeah.
Sounds like we're going to make a retail...
And it's R3. We've got to remember that. This isn't R3.
Well, you know, and that's, I think that that's another whole problem, that we have things that we should have rezoned, that we haven't, because it's an investment that people have. I mean, I, as a citizen, I feel strongly that we are choking the downtown.
I, I would contend that as long as we can preserve, I'm sharing that with you, that we can preserve the actual businesses. But, you know, we already fielded multiple complaints about student activities, late-night activities in neighborhoods, and Court Street is unto its own, and kind of removes them out of the, you know...
Wouldn't you think that we would take up that with the people that allow 1,000, 2,500 extra people each year? I mean, that's not my problem.
Who you used to work for, you said?
Yeah.
Oh.
Who I still work for a little bit.
Oh, you worked for a little bit, okay.
Actually, for business.
Is there a suggestion box, a place you can drop one in?
No, but...
But here it is. Here you are.
I mean, you know that when you started, it was the, a major problem in the city, when you started as mayor, as you finish.
It's still, well, it grows.
A major problem. It grows, yes.
But having put on my mayor hat, I realize if the, if the trend was the other way, I'd be a lot more concerned.
Well, if it was half and half as it was in '73, maybe, you know. I guess, Alan, what were you going to say? I'm not in charge, but there you go.
Yeah, I, I'm not, I'm, I'm just going to give you a subjective comment, but I put my entrepreneurial hat on. I think one of the things we have to do to get more mixed use uptown is what you're talking about, you know, stores, so you could buy items, gift shops, that kind of stuff. You've got to, you've got to expand employment in the area. You know, the fact is, we do have some nice buildings. A lot of them are empty. They're not at full capacity for, for employment. And the fact is, if you had young startups and, and divisions of companies, things like call centers, and I come from a place, call centers is that, what color do you want your checks? They're like solving problems with virtualization and storage and data. And, you know, people that work in those, they're generally young people, earlier in their career, they're technically oriented. In Silicon Valley, where we're from, those jobs pay 80-plus a year. And so what happens is, if you have people working in some of those businesses, economic development, well, then they'll go to dinner. They'll also want to go ahead and buy a shirt when they're, so it'll take care of itself. So I think part of the equation there is with this, some of the buildings that we have, how do we go ahead and lure employers into the city? I mean, if you wait for organic growth of two guys in a startup, and it can wait for a long time, but how do we lure those in? And I think that's part of the mix. I also talked to, I think it's council at one issue, about, I thought it was a good idea to run the meters seven days a week, and when the, in the breaks, when the students leave, turn the meters off. And what happens is, then people could come and they could dabble in the businesses, would help the restaurants, you know, it's going to be step functions, what I'm saying, there's all those things. But I agree with you that, I mean, I was here in '73. It was a very good year, from what I remember. But, you know...
Well, I would be more concerned about this if the transportation system that the city is developing were not in existence, you know? And I think now, students have more opportunity to go out to East State Street to shop, more development out there in terms of shopping, stores, things of that nature, than I would be if we didn't have that bus system any longer.
Oh, right.
I think that, I think that, you know, fortunately or unfortunately, no matter, you know, depending on what side of the, you know, stadium you might sit on, the bottom line is that I think neighborhoods eventually start to develop themselves in terms of what the needs are, what the, what the desires of a, of a local community are. And I think what you have in terms of uptown at this stage is a lot of local students who prefer to be up close to their workplace, that, that is the school, within walking distance there, to have some restaurants, to have some, I guess, bars, things of that nature. But in terms of like, if you're talking about developing retail, things of that nature, I think that the, the natural flow with the mass transit that we have now is, is taking people out at a fairly convenient pace out to East State. And I think that that's the, the retail development, you know, that we now have in, in the city. And I don't know that retail is really something that you can expect on Court Street anymore, you know, given the, the residents that you have, the desire for, for residential space and things of that nature.
Well, from Nancy's point, and we often said, and we talked about this during that Essence of Athens planning, that one of the best comments you can hear is, and to think that I saw you on Court Street today. So, you know, you do want Court Street to be able to be vibrant and vibrant economically, and not just taverns, and so...
Yeah, I think, and you're talking from an entrepreneurial viewpoint, too, the service, the OU entrepreneurial viewpoint. I'm just talking as a citizen and what people say.
No, well, I'm talking, I'm, I'm speaking just as a resident.
More is better.
I'm speaking as a resident who's, who's, you know, basically looked at the flow of things over the last 20 years. And, you know, I think that, you know, planning commissions or the community had the opportunity years ago to, to maybe alter this. But I, I think at this stage, to a big degree, the students are speaking in terms of where they want to live and the kind of stores that they want to, to have surrounding them that are convenient to them.
But I think that zoning that's there, without variances, probably would be a more restrictive item than it is, without all of the add-ons we do. No offense about this thing. I know it's a crappy-looking building that is being upgraded, but, and it's probably pretty safe. But there's a limit, and I want to know where that limit is, because I think we're getting mighty close, mighty close. The noise and the rest is all a problem, and, you know, people are only here for a couple of years, two years, and that's it, you know. Brad students don't live there.
I agree, but if we're talking about developing uptown, you know, I think that, that was, Mr. McMillan, if I'm hearing him right, is, you know, you need a few more people uptown who could take advantage of restaurants during the day, things of that nature. And, you know, I got my head lopped off a couple of years ago when I was talking about the old armory and, you know, workspace where you made a 24-hour work center, things of that nature. But that's one of the few places left uptown where I think an entrepreneur could actually get in and use the space and bring people in, hire people, who would, again, take advantages of any stores or restaurants that are uptown.
I agree with you. Yeah, that's a good location.
Realize that some of that activity you're talking about has been taken over by the Central View, which has flexible office space for the, the small entrepreneur. The trends, again, I'm, I'm mayor, I'm not a dictator. I can't mandate what kind of businesses could be uptown.
Right.
Okay, so, so if you look at the trends, saying, okay, what's going on? You know, we don't have the hardware stores, we don't have the Woolworths. Woolworths sat empty for many years. What's replaced it? OU has replaced it. Especially Books was replaced by a church. So you could say, yes, let's go and get those businesses in there, but we can't drive them in there if they're not going to, if they're not going to flourish or it doesn't fit the conditions. You know, everybody, a lot of people miss Barron's. Well, you know, Barron's is gone, you know, was, you know, there was an itch for that, there was a need for that, but not enough to make it survive, you know?
Well, things change.
We could actually go back and revisit, ask John to revisit the parking capacity, the actual livability of, of the entire Court Street corridor, which would be instructive, because it would tell us what the limitations are.
I'd start with garbage. That would be one of the first things I'd say. I mean, honestly, I think there's some things, but, you know, it's not Mr. McMillan's problem, and we, you know, I was, as I said, no offense to you, but I think there's, as a citizen, I keep getting concerned about, and you said you shared my concern, and I'm grateful for that.
Well, I can tell you, as each one of these comes to my desk, garbage is dealt with. I mean, I, I'm making them come into compliance with our uptown.
Well, that's good.
I mean, it's, it's become a requirement, whether it's written or not, I'm making them do it.
Access and all the rest. No, I mean, it's just the whole concept. And I, I hear you all. I just, I just get nervous about it.
Well, no...
People are going to say, are you on the planning commission? You let that happen?
One of the most significant things I think I heard from you was about the university enrollment growth.
Yeah.
And we're continued to be told that it's just small incremental, and I get that it continues to...
800 houses, that's all.
And the other, the other is that there is some discussion amongst, you know, the OU world there, about looking to have a commercial endeavor on the first floor of the Woolworths building, because we call everything by its old name.
But, you know, then they get a new crew in. No offense, but they'll all say, oh, well, we can't have anybody from outside come in and do our food service. We're going to do it all interior, you know, with our, with our own facilities. So you know how that goes. It comes and it goes.
But, and again, what you're alluding to is, you know, the bottom line is, until the community resolves the parking issue uptown, then, you're talking about development for office space, for retail, whatever, combined, mixed with residential, is, is still, you know, is a moot point then, at that stage.
Visualize, I mean, tell me how the community would solve the parking problem. They solved the parking problem by not going uptown. I mean, they're not going to take the buses, most people, because they're all wedded to their cars, the ones who are not students. And the students run their own mass transit. I mean, do you ever follow one in? They're following, they drive in and drop their friends off at all the different places?
At the same time, we, we have an uptick in people who actually walk to work from the...
Oh, agreed.
To the university.
Agreed.
Okay, so, you know, and uptown, you know, the thing is, it's, it's going to go where the business is. If it's 20,000 students, that's where the business is. Not us who already have enough in our houses and don't need to buy more.
Yeah, and I'm, you know, I'm ready to stop and say, I'm not, I want to go ahead and vote for this thing, so I'll move the adoption.
Is that a motion?
Yeah.
Yeah.
With the, with the requirements, how about, how about adding, with the requirements and working with our EPW and the fire?
Yeah, I'd like, I'd like adding two inches to be adding two inches, $10 an inch a foot, rather than half the cost. But, you know, I don't know how it'll be. I'm not at, I'm not at a point to, to stipulate that.
Well, they're going to have to with a hydrant on it.
Yeah.
It has to be six-inch.
All right, and I would like to see somebody find out how much capacity is still left on Court Street. But anyway, I move that we accept it with the, with the...
I imagine what would happen if somebody could, could redevelop the Folks Building.
Yeah.
Is somebody going to second it?
I'll second it.
I'll second that.
So move us along here.
Okay, so...
And that includes all of the requirements that are stated here.
Okay, any more commentary, I guess is the question. And, and just to point out, you look at something like CVS. CVS has now got hardware in there. It's, it's, these, these stores are going to morph to, to fit the need. I mean, you go in there, they have a one aisle where you can get your screws and screwdriver, you know, and duct tape, you know? Which will do it all.
And I'd like to point out, the Union Street Market has a very nice selection of hardware.
Yes.
Nice plug, Alan.
There you go. Someone restate the motion, then?
The motion is we accepted the Title 41 with the conditions that have been remarked on. Is that how it was?
Nancy...
Can you repeat that?
I, I'll put it as all other staff requirements plus the fire and EPW.
And the enlargement of the pipe, if that's not in here.
It is. I've got that in there, yeah.
Is there a second?
I was seconding.
Okay, all in favor?
Leave this baby alone.
So that's passed unanimously?
Yee-haw.
Communications, uh...
You could jump in.
Well, I think you had announced, we had announced that the Rivergate project has been, was tabled today until they requested it go two weeks from today on December 18th.
Okay.
Let me ask him a question, please. Did they join the variance request? Was, what was in the paper about that?
They have partnered with our legal, they're, yes, they're, they're in on the, the suit.
Is there any, is there any...
For their own place?
No, 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 no. They are co-defendants with the city.
Okay.
Oh, I see.
And the VCA.
Okay.
Okay, so, and is there any problem with going ahead as long as...
No, until a judge says stop, they're allowed to proceed accordingly.
No injunction.
No, so I just want to make sure we didn't reach a point where we had some trouble.
Okay, John, do you have any information that you would like to tell the community about here?
On that project?
No, we're moving on to communications.
Oh, you down there?
Down there, we're moving now.
Um, I can say that, knock on wood, this afternoon, late this afternoon, or first thing tomorrow morning, we will have one lane of Union Street open.
Yeah.
And the parking on the south side of the street. So, working on that yet today. That's where I was at before I came here. So, they're, they're supposed to be in transit from Columbus to put the fence up, get it done, and, and be underway, so...
And this is a more permanent structure than what we have now?
This is a much more permanent structure. This is a six-foot high-security fence that's going to run from 10, which is Uptown Dog, to the west side of the Union, and fence that area off where the construction's going to be occurring, and demolition's going to eventually be occurring. And, but the, the south sidewalk, the south parking, and the south lane will all be open on Union Street. And there'll be no parking outside of the fence on the north side of Union Street, unless it's permission through us for some contractors, and we'll work that out with them. So we're in the process of dealing with that.
Was there more damage to Uptown Dog than what the city announced? Because they were talking about that some of their, back portion of their building is actually going to have to be demolished.
I wouldn't say we didn't announce that. I sure did. Yes, the back part of their building, there's a little addition on the back part of the Uptown Dog that got damaged by the fire.
Okay.
Actually, not damaged by fire, damaged by collapse of the building next to it that came into it.
Okay, councilman, yeah, please.
Jeff Reiser.
You want to sit by a phone?
Yeah, so is John.
Standby, Mike, your choice.
Standby. Jeff Reiser, City Council, Second Ward. If you're going to stop no parking on the north side, are we removing the meters?
No, I don't think so.
I'm sorry, what was that?
Removing the meters for the north side Union during construction and demolition.
Do you not think that if, since we really do not have a good idea of how long they're going to be closed, shut down, I can see vandalism very easily occurring to those meters, and meters are not cheap.
Well, six of them are going to be bagged, and the rest of them are inside the fence area, so...
Yeah, but that doesn't stop...
Well, the reason, here, here's what my hope is, is once we get the demolition done, we don't know yet about the status of the facades. We're hoping to preserve them, do everything we can. But, and if, if we're able to preserve the facades, and after the demolition is done, then we will move the fence or the barricade or whatever back to the sidewalk, so that parking on both sides will be open. And, and we're only talking a month, two months. I think by February, this should be, the way I'm hearing, we should be able to have all of Union open, whether we preserve the facades or not, one way or another.
In two months?
So, yes. That's what I'm shooting for.
That's ambitious.
Well, yes, it is.
The better it is.
Well, absolutely.
I didn't say the buildings will be rebuilt. I'm saying...
I understand, but anyway, the parking would then be available, and the meters therefore be used.
That is correct.
So...
And, yes, we would probably have to do some sort of, whether the south sidewalk, excuse me, the north sidewalk remains closed, or if we put some sort of, I keep saying, New York City-style walk path down through there, you know, with the fall protection and scaffolding or something, we'll, we'll proceed as we go. I mean, that's all going to depend on the status of the facades, and where, where that, and we're moving forward. We're, still got a few weeks of structural engineers and stuff like that to, and how we shore that up, and costs and everything else. So that, those things aren't answered yet, but...
Right, right.
But I, I, I think, you know, demolition-wise, from all the contractors I've talked to and the insurance companies, that we should be, what's going to hold us up right now is how we handle the facades. So we're moving forward.
Okay, just want to make sure our property is protected.
Okay. Mr. Paskey, anything else from your report, sir?
Well, then I know in my report, I guess that was a communication. Then a report next Tuesday evening, it is on the agenda for the Board of Zoning Appeals for the BP station. They're requesting a variance from ball control to, well, they got a few themselves, but the biggest one is their off-street parking requirements to tear down the BP, put commercial on the first floor residential above. And then the parking that they want to have will be deed restricted, is in the location of where the Tattoo Parlor is right now, at the corner of Carpenter and Grosvenor.
Is that B2D or B3?
That is B3.
B3, okay.
They would be leaving of the, one of the structures on there, so therefore would have a primary structure on site where the engineer's office is at, and, so.
No, I was talking about the BP station itself.
That's a B3 as well.
Okay.
It's a B3 as well. So they're requesting a variance for number of parking spaces.
Distance.
What engineer's office?
The old, I guess.